We're still waiting on a couple of our members, but I tell you what, if we can go ahead and get started, maybe that's catch up with this. We do have a long, probably the order. It's our custom start our meetings with the invitation and a prayer.
In this prayer, Father God, in neighbor's name, we give the glory and praise. We thank you for the many blessings that Thy has bestowed upon each of us. Lord, I pray that Thy will bless the leaders of our community, our state and our country. Be with us and guide us as we conduct the business of our community. I pray that Thy will be in the midst, Lord, and that we will make the best decisions that's beneficial overall. And as we leave this place, I pray that Thy will bless and guide each of us to our various destinations safely. These are the blessings we pray in answer in Jesus' name, amen. Join me in the prayers, please.
I pray that allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the Island Party Commission meeting held on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, subject to any necessary changes or corrections. Have a motion to approve. Mr. Thorpe, sorry about that. Have a motion on the table to approve the minutes in a second. All in favor, please, okay? All right, still, did we have any notification from Commissioner Duncan that he was gonna be here or not be here?
No, we see it not.
Okay, we'll proceed without any, we do have a call. First on the agenda is VP two four, dash three, one fifteen and one twenty-one Mallory Street, those preservation. Consider village preservation design review approval for demolition of a portion of the structure, one five Mallory Street. And addition of a second story at one two one Mallory Street, six thousand dollars, also zero four, zero four sixty-one, zero four, zero four sixty, zero. This is on the site, this on village mixed use and island preservation, the whole of the district. Charles Day Apptick, Charlesy Air, and the land pool, one two one N S L C, C W C.
Good evening, Commissioner, Stephanie Lee Plantinghander. So this project was before you, it was your June meeting, and it had been deferred, given some, there were some neighbor concerns. And there were some questions from the commission, so it had been deferred to July, the July meeting ended up getting canceled. And so Stephanie, you noticed it for this meeting, so even though you did hold a public hearing in June, because it has been renews for public hearing, there will be another public hearing this evening as well. So what, just to kind of refresh you remember on this one, so there, there is a portion of the property that would be demolished, the very back of what's the Bluewater, the former Bluewater Grill. It's not a historic part of the building, that would be demolished to make way for some parking. And they're looking to do three residential units above, above the building. And there's really two different buildings, so there's Bluewater Grill, and then there's the site where we do do, and we have our stores, so it's like a story about there, so it's one twenty-one and one fifteen Mallory Street. And so just, first you kind of on the style, they're going for a similar to the Strouders building. And there were some updates to the packet, the, the building at one twenty-one remains the same as what was submitted prior. But they did have some changes to one fifteen, just some kind of showing everything with the parking and with the layout of the building, those are included in your packet. And the architect can get more detail on those, they did submit color palette materials. And so these are your possible motions, and Charles Day is representing the family. With you.
Do you have any questions of staff? I've got, I've got one, I, I noticed in, in the narrative that the architect provided, that there's, there's reference, there's reference to, to revised drawing that shows the walls that are recessed on the adjacent walls of the, I guess, from the structures next door. But this doesn't seem to show that. We didn't receive any, any new updates on that.
Yeah, these are the updates that we did receive, so yeah, I think the architect to talk about that.
Okay, the, you, you.
Well, if it's related at, I saw a rendering that showed kind of like a gallery, sidewalk cover upstairs that didn't look like it was in the same plane.
Well, there's, I think, I think there's some, there was some revisions in the package.
It didn't match up. I love the different version that they throw out, they say in the packet, it looked different to me.
Any other questions, or if we can call, if we can call an architect, uh, Mr. Beck, introduce yourself.
Yes, Charles Day Architect, I had submitted updated drawings for the apartment on one twenty-one Mallory Street. In a portal and also an email correspondence. Is there a way we can get that, can I reset it to you, Stephanie?
I don't know if we'll be able to pull it up here on IC, if we're able to do that, should we try with IC if we can turn it to any laptop there?
So there are additional drawings that are not in this package?
Right, we had submitted them previous to this meeting, August thirteenth.
I had, I had noticed that earlier today when I was going over it, that there was a few producing this information.
So I think was the, is it just the one, was it just the one fifteen then that was shown as updated in the packet, it's not one twenty-one?
One twenty-one and one fifteen both updated.
Did the, is the ones that were in the packet for, the one fifteen, is that accurate?
Yes. There's some of the, there's some, I know at one time at our last meeting, Charles, we talked about railing, and you, you were there, and said that you had some railings off the building that aren't on, obviously, this drawing that we have before is not.
Yes, um, major revisions from the previous drawings for one twenty-one, we brought the building in four feet on all side, or on the north and south adjacent party wall sides. And from the street front elevation, and drastically changed the elevations for the comments that we've seen in the last week.
So unfortunately, we cannot put up any other five line, so apologies for that.
What are, uh, yeah. He does, he has the advocates here, he's getting his drawings. I don't, I don't know that we can necessarily approve the design without seeing the design. Charles, you have, you have it on your phone?
I, I do have it on my phone, yes.
I don't know, is it possible to click the button today?
I also have it on my computer, I know that may, for the screen, uh, screening, uh, where to plug it in. Let's check there, let's check there.
Unfortunately, ITC says that we can't do it option, so if you have it on a computer that you can, of course, the public won't be able to do it.
And you have it on your laptop?
Yes.
Let me ask the county attorney. What's, what's the options here, if we could see it, obviously, everyone here can't see it unless, unless we turn around, I mean, we can share a laptop, laptop up here. I'd rather not, I'd rather not send the people away without giving them at least some direction.
So, I think you can use the, the ITC can do what you think is appropriate here, I'm not sure that there's. I think it, it may be awkward to, for y'all to view it and I have it on the public screen, but I'm not sure there's a requirement that it be shown to the public in order for you to consider it. It may be best practice to find a way to do that. I, I wonder, I wonder, is it, this stuff that's like on the, part of the agenda? You think, is this what you're talking about?
And for the public, we've also boosted the plans and the windows storefronts, one twenty-one, for public viewing.
And he's, he's proposing some changes that don't work on the drawing. And I assume, Charles, you made changes.
Yes, sir.
And, and I know there's people here that are recognizing cases that, that, that want to comment on this, and let me, just if I may, show of hands, people that, that may have something to say about this particular issue? Okay, so, so we have some, those, yeah, we've got people next door. I don't know, this is a, this is not.
Um, so for, for the public, so our, our community development board all that, the open gov, we said when people need to go to their phones and their laptops to get to see it. But we do have a public viewer, an open gov, that they do get this case number, they can pull up and land, they are all public records. That is a way for people who are here in this room to pull that up online, but.
Well, I think, I think you could, one even bigger problem is the commission hasn't even seen it yet.
Correct, right.
So that's, I mean, that's the number one problem, the number two problem, and just as important is the people that are here to comment, and that may not have seen those drawings. Is that, is that, is that true?
I have seen them, sir.
Seen the revised drawings?
I have seen them.
Oh, you have seen them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I mean, the only other option, I, I know, we've got applicants saying, I don't think I want to wait another month, and there could be a special call meeting that the board, you know, the ITC wants to try to schedule, we have to schedule the date tonight, though, to, in order to be able to continue on record without having to renotice this. And otherwise, we can, either board can look at, you know, look at the laptop and, and see.
Well, it seems, it seems like the people that are here, you have seen the revised drawings.
Yes, sir.
You have, anyone else that, that wants to comment on this particular project, that may not have seen the drawings? Yes, sir, you have, if you know about the project, but you haven't seen anything.
Haven't seen the drawings, but I know the location, I just want to make a comment about access for the future.
Uh, this chair, sorry, I was looking at all the drawings. What, what are the changes, did the footprint, footprint change?
If you read, if you read, is, is there?
I haven't seen that.
Okay, well, it's in, it's in, it's in the packet that we got, okay, it's in there, and, and I'll read the phrases, and I'll take a report on this. This is, this is the third paragraph down, the last sentence, we are now proposing the external walls can recess from the perimeter of the first floor in an effort to be able to construct the second level without requiring access to the roofs of the neighboring buildings. And then, again, on this second page of this, under, under design, it says, as, as previously mentioned, we have increased the exterior footprint on the sides, as well as the front and side along Mallory Street. We have originally proposed decks and bapties, recessed inside the front wall, on, on this revision, we are proposing bapties with railings that extend to the perimeter of the structure. That's, that's in this, that's in this area. So are we in trouble if we went ahead, went forward, if we could see it, if, if the commission could see it, it sounds like the people that, that are wanting to speak to it tonight have seen it, with the exception of one, and I would invite him to come up here and look at it with us. Can, can we, can we proceed in that regard?
I think as long as you're clear at the end, exactly what you're approving, design wise, as apparent, I think that is probably the main thing to consider going forward, making sure that whatever you vote on, those plans are the ones that are, you know, everyone is on the same page about.
Okay, well, I'm gonna ask the commission now, commission, are we, are we comfortable with that?
Well, I think we ought to give it a try.
Okay. Charles, step back, please.
All right, well then.
Can you direct someone out with the word finder on our phone as well?
So, um, we can do.
You got Stephanie's email Friday?
Yeah, but it's not, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's a later version, I think it didn't get picked out.
Oh, really?
Different ways they could organize our portal, I think, uh.
There are a lot of drawings here.
There are, um, so the portal, you can go to community development, then to the development review on the, on the homepage, so win county dot org. And you go to community development, then development review, and then there is a link to, I think, it will be put up in development review. Or might be community development portal, if you click on that, there is, if someone is never logged in, there is a login that you need to create, and for anybody, you need to create that, look at it.
Right, do it there. This is, this is, who tells this, hey, to the left. Okay, so this shows it recessed on either side, right?
Right.
And then the railing across the front, and you've got some, it looks like all these structures over the, over the.
Before, we had a wall washed with the first floor, and we had the most concrete design there, even in more bland and dangerous settings, it was all back and give us the opportunity to provide more architectural detail.
I would like those, it, it looks like we only got a couple here, if, if you would like to look at it with this, please, please come on up.
I've seen it.
You've seen it?
Yes, sir. Have you all seen it?
Best one you got up there, right now? No, no, okay.
So, okay, we got this up there, where's our IT at?
Like we asked.
Wait, do you need?
Yeah, I, I think.
So this, okay, so that's, we've got the blue light. That's the gym, the balcony, and the parking lot.
I just want to make sure that the board has, has that changed?
Is that only on the Mallory Street side? Yes. Okay, not on the Pier point side?
So this is the only change to, to those units, a good change for Bluewater building.
What is up there for Bluewater is reflected as to what's current?
We have that, yes. Yeah, and we've got that, this is just listed as drawn one two one.
For one two one.
That's right, yeah, the plans in packet for one fifteen are the correct updated ones, one twenty-one did not share that.
That's not, I think, yeah, I don't think I should stop them.
What, what are the dimensions on Mallory Street for the, for the Bluewater?
I think.
Is it only one, one porch or one balcony?
No, it's, uh, we're keeping the existing front in that same footprint, and we are going to salvage that balcony, outdoor second story porch that exists, to modify that to allow for parking board.
You're talking on the backside?
Yes, sir.
And you are, aren't you gonna remove, like, what part are you removing, are you removing, are you not removing the outside?
So we are keeping the more historic part of the structure, and we're removing the two additions that happened in the nineties and the early two thousands.
Trump, if you would strip up the president, and if you hit the mic, and, and a little out of order, but I, I will allow it in this case. All right, any other questions for the advocate? All right, Charles, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone, anyone here that would like to comment on this project? Yes, sir. Please introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Mark, I live about a block from the Bluewater building on Butler, and we've known these terrorists for many years, who, I guess, they still own this building, but they sold it. One of the issues that we've had over the years on Floyd Street is the commercial use of Floyd for making deliveries, would be tractor trailer trucks and other delivery trucks, that is incompatible with the residential nature of Floyd Street. And we, I don't know, is, is the bottom level here going to be used for retail in the future of the Bluewater building, or is it just going to be used for residential?
I'll, I'll ask the, I'll, I'll ask the architect to, ask that after, after you're on the board, on the board.
Sure, well, what we, what we would like to see is the neighborhood there, I am chairman of the, of the Oklahoma homeowners association there. What we would like to see is a restricted covenant put on the buildings to not allow commercial traffic or deliveries on Floyd Street to these buildings. And residential side, we understand the residential significance of it, and we are, we're in favor of residential, but we're not in favor of the continued use of Floyd Street for commercial use. So we would like a restricted covenant placed on the buildings so that if at any time in the future it is used for retail, deliveries cannot be made on Floyd Street. I mean, just personal deliveries like UPS, I think, actually, we understand that for people, but, you know, who live there. But not the big trucks that have been using this in the past because they've got their engines running sometimes for an hour at a time while they're unloading, and, you know, we want to prevent that type of activity in the future of Floyd Street.
Is there anything else?
That's it.
Would I have a question, would that restriction affect other businesses other than the two that we're talking about?
Well, only if they came in for an approval and you put that restricted covenant on it, and right now, you have the power, as I understand it, to restrict these people because they're asking for approval of their particular work. But if there was other work to be done in the future, yes, we'd like to see that same restricted covenant put on there, but I don't know that.
I'm asking more existing businesses that use that, that use Floyd Street for deliveries with that.
Well, the only ones that use Floyd Street for deliveries was Bluewater, because the others make their deliveries through the alleyway behind Reverses.
Okay.
So definitely, we don't like those neighborhoods, we're not asking for anything on that, we understand packing deliveries on that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Chris Maydo, we have a, a retained Mr. Brad Proctor from Blueboun, uh, Blueboun Council as the attorney. He has reached out to Mr. Charles Day regarding this application, and is working through some options to go back and forth with Mr. Day to come with a cohesive plan of construction. The negative impacts, I don't know where he was, back and forth, what, what it is, what isn't, the negative impacts of what it could do for this area, is a couple things. You have pedestrian walkways for an alley to park in, that is used for alley access as you are there for deliveries, so there is anything moving back in all of those valleys. You've also had very straps, you have power, you have utilities, there's a ton of things that pedestrians should not have access to, walk back and forth, to access their units. As well as dumpster, we have dumpster jobs down the way, so we have trash cans, we have people, employees up and down these valleys, as well as vehicles. That, we already have issues with parking in the village, and any company, you can have a vehicle back there parked, you don't know who it is, so you have no access for deliveries, so you do have to use the front side sometimes. Now that also blocks up four or five parks, possibly go eighteen either, at nine o'clock in the morning, blocking the parking spot, can people, some of the traffic. We are a full service restaurant, we do have the police, but we'll be getting there at four AM in the morning. We do not want to have an issue later on down the road with residents, with noise service, with issues of complaints, because we are, and we would like to, go up as well. We're not opposed to commercial development in the area, we are opposed to the residential development. I do ask all tonight to defer to this until we can speak with Mr. Day, Mr. Brad Proctor, and we can come up and come up with a plan for this development. Thank you.
Any questions? Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Keith Cudlin, I'm property manager of the dollars at one twenty-three Mallory.
Good evening. My name is Keith Cudlin. I'm property manager of the owners of one twenty-three Mallory, which is Thomas Store. And both owners, they were on their time, are very much opposed to this project for a variety of reasons. Uh, one, the construction interfering with Thomas's business, and it also revenue with all the construction going on. But the biggest issue has to do with parking. I know reviewing the plan, they say they're putting eight spaces once they remove part of Blue Water. The eight spaces will be down Floyd Street. Let's be realistic. Uh, people going to these three units, their renters and their guests are not going to come out down that alley, go down Butler, turn left on Floyd, and go down to their parking spot. What they're going to do is they're either gonna park in the alley, whether it's for short term, long term, if they're gonna drop off luggage, go pick up someone else. They also are gonna be parking on the side of Roberta's, in front of Roberta's, on Floyd, and in front of Thomas's because it's closer to get to their back door than it is to go down Floyd to these eight parking spots. It's realistic that that's what's gonna happen. They're gonna have renters there with more than a couple cars, there's only eight spots. And I'm telling you right now, if this is approved, people are gonna be blocking parking in front of these retail businesses, where parking is already, um, difficult.
Any questions? Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Newberry. My family owns, started this station water practice. And we're opposed to this also because of the parking issue. Not only will it be a parking issue with them parking in front of our businesses, but those people are gonna get blocked into those eight parking places. I mean, on any given day, you can walk back there and there's gonna be a delivery truck, a trailer with cop parks on it, people parking there illegally to begin with. And my other thing is, that whole area is also meant to be a fire alley. If our businesses catch on fire, the fire trucks aren't gonna be able to get back there to get to the backside of our businesses. Roberta's just caught on fire a few years ago, and they had an issue with getting to the backside of that building. So, the other question I have is, where is all this staging gonna happen? For their building materials, their heavy construction? The other thing is, even when the sidewalks were done, we lost business because people just don't wanna deal with a construction site. And if they stage the things in the parking places, that causes a whole nother parking issue. So, those are my concerns and my questions, but retail space, fine. Retail, or residential, we're, we're against that because of those reasons.
Anyone else? Close to public security issues, issues. Uh, Mr. Day, you wanna address some of these issues that you brought up? And I, I've got some of them listed, but you probably heard them all. Uh, I think, uh, it sounds like the biggest one was parking.
Parking. Um, we are meeting the county requirements, or shifting the county requirements as far as parking go, providing the eight residential parking spaces off of Floyd Street. Uh, there will not be a connection directly from Floyd Street to the alleyway, which the narrative spells out. Uh, the direction to walk would be going up Floyd Street, uh, up the Butler, and then down the alley. Um, unless there is an opportunity that presents itself, but right now, the wall that's dividing the property has a lot of mechanicals and utilities. And, um, I'm not sure that's something we can really get into for the renovation to make sense. Um...
Sorry, could you, um, I didn't understand that. You can't access the parking through the alley to get to the backside of the, you know, resident, proposed residence?
Correct. The parking lot is isolated from the alley.
Describe these correctly?
Yes, sir.
So, so right now, uh, Mr. Day, if you've got parking, the parking lot, how, how am I gonna get to my unit if I'm on one of the units?
Uh, if you were in one fifteen, you would have direct access to it. If, uh, you were in one twenty-one, you would go, uh, up Floyd Street, across the Butler, and then down the alley.
So, there's no way right now, that, like you said, there's no connection between the parking lot and the alley at all?
Correct.
Between, between the district?
So, if you're in one twenty-one, you're gonna park behind one fifteen?
Yes.
And then walk down the Butler, come back up the alley?
Yes.
I, I, I think most, most, most all the comments we got were about the parking situation. And, uh, I did hear your comments saying that you do comply, and I agree, and our ordinance is pretty clear as to what is required. Um, and, and, it must be, he does, he does meet the standards, right?
He does, and, um, I will state, I want, this is kind of a first step in this, this process. So, this is, this is the design of this. Um, so they will also have cyclan as well as conditional use permit or the actual use of the housing on the second floor. So, um, so there are already, you know, changes to the housing iteration, you know, there's been a parking waiting to be looked at at this time, but...
So, so tonight, we're just approving the design?
Is, so does the demolition of the beer building and, I, if it needs the building renovation, criteria?
And, and the staff's, and the staff's understanding, or at least your findings, that it does?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, you gotta go up to the board to decide that you feel like it does, but yes, staff don't think it does.
Mr. Chair, since we're talking about parking, have we seen a diagram that shows eight vehicles in those spots?
There's, there's the parking lot design that's up there right now.
Yes, let's see what a vehicle...
Parking lots were designed, they're all the same size, they're designed towards the, uh, requirement that the county has.
I mean, if you're driving a, a miniature car, that might work.
But shown there is a, a full-size van.
Yeah, I'd like to see ankle-sized vans. And then, 'cause I, I just don't think you can get out of that parking lot number seven if there's one in eight. Uh, just, you know, this is, this is the reason why all eight cars are not shown graphically. Uh, I mean, we can make anything out of...
We had eight cars shown, and they would not be able to read the diagram. That's the only reason.
I agree. Well, I think, I'm determined if I can read it.
I think the parking spaces are the correct size, nine by eighteen.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
If they're built, they were designed to county...
Yeah, we just, we met with, um, Eric Granados with the city, or, I'm sorry, county engineering, and, uh, worked through this within preliminary area.
Okay, and this needs to be clear now. So, so tonight, we've been asked to approve the design, and we are not, we are not approving a cyclan.
Correct.
So, so the use, the uses and allowed use?
No, so the use, that, that's, the county's taking the day, which county comes first. Um, it was, they decided to go, go this route first to get, to get an attention from the ITC whether you are, you're for the design or not. But the use is not allowed yet because, um, in the logistics use, you can have housing on the second level if that's a conditional use. And so, the housing itself is not permitted yet, unless the official use permit is recognized by the ITC, and then...
So, 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 so in order to proceed with this, we've got to go through a conditional use process, is what you're trying?
Yeah, so that's still, that's still to come, for this project to be pulled in, you would have to...
It's, it's, it's almost backwards then, isn't it? I mean, we should be approving the conditional use first, and then, and then, and then proceed to the design, and then say, okay, the design is...
Well, the design doesn't work, why would we get to the use?
Well, well, the, well, but that's, that's what a conditional use theory would be.
Well, that's, this parking meets county standards if it's down the block and around. I mean, when we require parking, it has to be right there in front of the storefront.
No, well, no, no, that's...
It has to be accessible, does it not? Why have it down the road? I think it's a fair concern that these cars are gonna end up dropping off their luggage in the alley, 'cause that's how you get to the residence, and I'm okay with that. But then they're gonna have to back around, navigate to Floyd Street, somehow get into this jammed-up parking lot, which I'm not convinced is workable. Um, I mean, it's just, I think we've got a few issues here.
Well, I think, I think, uh, you know, uh, now that I understand, and I, and I didn't understand until you just mentioned that, that, that this requires conditional use for it. And at the conditional use stage, we would, we would iron out all those difficulties, which then would lead to a cyclan, which is then would, yes, seem to be... I mean, all this could happen at the same, the same meeting, but we're hearing the last stage of a three-stage process, which is the design.
But, but to be fair, there are defined steps, as to say that this is the last step, right?
Well, I, I know, but if we were, I mean, before we proceeded with the design, wouldn't you wanna know that it would even be allowed?
I would, but if it's not required.
Right, but it's, but it's sort of, it's sort of...
It's all backwards.
Yes, it's all backwards.
But, I mean, it's not, it's not prohibited. The thing is that it's up to them, it's their choice, right?
Okay.
That's right. Our county does not spell out the process, but, because we have this also like variances, or, you know, there's, like, we have a sign permit, that's a sign permit. Um, or the sign, building renovation came through you all, they still needed a variant that was to board a commissioner, so, um, yeah, so we, we look at, we see it different ways, so it kind of just depends on how, how an applicant chooses to go about it, or really how the board is comfortable doing it to.
Yeah, but I think, I think in the design situation, we're all very comfortable. This is, this has got a little, make it a bit of a way of staying a little hair on it.
Yeah, it's possible that the, the design is so important to them, if we didn't approve the design, they wouldn't proceed with the project at all.
No, that's a point. Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Day.
Thank you.
Um... The commission, this, uh, the public committee is closed, by the way. Um, commission, we've got motions. So, we would not pay voting on the use. We're...
Should I say we're voting on whether or not we like the looks of it?
That's all we're voting on. That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's all we're voting on.
I'm, they're, they're gonna have to come back. I like the way it looks, quite honestly, but I, but, but it seems to me like the bigger overall question is the difference in use. Do we like, is the use gonna, I mean, I'm, I, I like the looks of it.
What was the demolition as well?
Well, it's...
The look ain't demolition, excuse me.
I'm, uh, Mr. Charles just brings up another issue, and this is, a lot of this issue is aging materials. Where, where is that gonna happen? Can we get an answer? I mean, this is a significant project. Are you gonna take out twenty spots in, in the village parking lot?
Would it not be from a hun, would it be...
No, 'cause that would block, uh...
Pier Point.
King City, um, services.
There's, there's utilities as well that have to be demolished for that building to be moved.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm very confused on where the utilities of the power, the, into that alley, where are they going? There's power, there's, there's...
I think utilities can be addressed. A lot of things you can do, you can move them, reroute them, there's a cost for that. But, there, I mean, staging a laydown area, unless you're gonna rinse them off, site a spot.
Well, you could, well, I mean, obviously, when they do this project, downstairs, it's not, there's nothing gonna be happening downstairs. You could actually use the downstairs to stage, not to the material that'd be used upstairs. I mean, that would be, you know, if, if somebody was in front of you with the project, I would say, well, just, just remember, we're, we're gonna put all the businesses downstairs out until, until we get the upstairs done.
Stephanie, um, if we... What do you do when you go to build downstairs?
The same way.
We may not have to demolish downstairs. We could just use the spaces there.
So, we're gonna put a covenant on here? You cannot use any of the, um, village merchants' parking spots for staging?
And what we could, I mean, that, that would be part of, that would be part of, part of the conditional special use.
Okay. So, I mean, it shows up, or is you can't get in parking lot? I mean, that, that's crazy, but what, I don't know what's there that can't be worked out, but it really needs to be worked out.
Commission, do we have a motion?
No, I have a question to staff stuff.
Okay.
I did. Um, what's the next step? If, if we did approve this tonight, demolition, what's their next step before they can actually start tearing things up?
So, um, so, kind of demolition would be part of the building renovation approval. They could apply for demolition permit, which is administrative, departmental division, so they, they could apply for that, and, and it could be that granted. Um, and so...
That'd be the last step?
That would be, yeah, that would be the last step for that, um...
And what do they look at when someone, when someone applies for demolition permit? You know?
Um...
What standards they need to have met to get the building approved?
I don't, I don't know what the building department looks at. I know presuming, um, we look at, I mean, in some cases, there's a tree plant required, depending on where the demolition is. Um, and of course, we look for a unit building preservation.
Interaction of neighbors and things like that?
I, I'm not sure how much the building division does, so I'll have to, have to check on that.
This is a conditional use permit that'll end up going in front of the county commission.
And it will. So, that, that's the other thing, too. There, there's kind of discomfort with kind of how things are. And this could be, you know, a package that all kind of stays together. So, it could be, you know, village, official use permit, and cyclan that are all looked at at the same time. Um, and then if, if ITC approved cyclan, it's only a reservation, then it would be a C, you know, you still have to opt for it. Um...
Well, that, that seems to me to be the logical way to approach it. It, it seems to me that it should evolve in one package for us, to make it a little, little split work. At that point, uh, the issue, regardless of what we decide, the county commission can make a whole nother decision as to what we decide, so...
First demolition is gonna be the back portion, right beside Pier Point.
Yeah, parking lot.
The parking.
Right.
Well, that's a good thing. That shouldn't have ever been built personally.
Much.
That addition in the residential side.
Well, it's there, and it's attached to the...
I think that's the best part of this project, is getting rid of what should never have been done twenty-five years ago.
And is attached to the wall.
I mean, that, that was a crazy agreement, we're gonna approve that. What we're doing with the, that could be the laydown area, but can you get through the, can you get through there?
We may have to pair some more in. Yes, what's, sir, Charles?
Could you tell us how the demolition may happen? How you expect it to happen, you know, with neighbors? Excited or angry or something?
Um, I don't know the exact means that the contractor would take, but, uh, they would remove, you know, from the street, and as they came to fill the dumpsters and hold off. Um, we have been talking with, uh, Curtain Wees Association and how that's gonna look. Um, we've talked about the possibility of placing some spaces for construction. Um, we've also talked about any kind of damage or anything that occurs to their property fence, we'd replace any kind. And so, those are conversations that have been started. Uh, another point to this, too, is we currently don't own building one fifteen, and so when we approached this, we realized it was kind of a hairy situation, where we didn't wanna get, this is kind of a probability exploration as to whether it's feasible to make, to purchase that building or not. And it was our understanding as we were going into this, that this was just a concept presentation, and, uh, you know, the idea of the parking lot and all of those components will be kind of agreed on, whether or not it's a acceptable concept, and to proceed to the next step.
Here's, there's currently, in St. Cassel, King City, there's currently a trailer in a parking spot as, that's providing storage for an ongoing renovation of the building. It's been taken a parking, shared. I mean, this is, I mean, for those to be backside, there's, there might be some parking taken up, but that's...
That's only one parking spot.
It's one parking spot.
Clarification. I think if this is deferred, what would they come back, bring back to this body of consideration, the steps?
So, if ITC seeks to defer this, this particular application further, I, I'm not quite clear what, I think it's just, maybe not, not sure if you like it at this point. So, I just have a question back to you as a board, you know, are there revisions you would want to see them make for it to come back to you all in, in September? Um, it sounds like kind of the conversation right now is just whether, what do you feel like is the right fit or not, um...
Well, I think, to me, it's, it's a, we can't divorce... Well, I think, to me, it's, it's a, we can't divorce the conditional use from, from the way it looks, because it's, it has to happen together, and so, and so if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this, I think we can see it all at one time, and so I would think if they came back, it would bring us a conditional use application, it would bring us a site plan application, bring us the whole package, and, and, and that way, not only us, but, but, but the people out there as well, can, I could look at the whole package, and I think that was one of the comments, and this one in Google, it was, hey, let's see the whole thing.
And I would say one thing, I don't have an issue with design, but I think the consensus is the issue with parking, and I don't know if there's a way to connect to that alley, or whatever they could do, but that would be one thing I would like to see improved.
Right, well, that, and, and that's, and that's what a conditional use would help us go through, and say, hey, look, we don't like this, and it's, and, and at that point, if we don't, if we don't recommend a conditional use to the county commission, it could be done anyway, regardless of whether or not.
Correct. Stephanie, could, um, since they don't even own the building yet, so, you know, if we approve demolition, although they don't know, they can't even get started yet, so is there a way for us to, to separate the, um, the, the design versus the demolition?
You, yeah, you can, you could approve a portion, yeah, approve a portion of the application, the design, and, um, are you denying demolition, or would you want to?
Well, maybe just because if they're, if they're coming to us wanting to know if we like this design or not, I mean, I think we could tell them if we like the design or not, okay, we don't have any, all the answers we need for the demolition part of it.
I think we could do that without voting, I think everyone here said, hey, it's, all right, we don't like, but we don't like all the other aspects of it, maybe.
Do you have a motion?
Uh, I'm in. And we're talking about another issue, it's having to do with more usage, there's a concern about allowing residential usage in a commercial district, and then possibly getting noise complaints, um, is, now, there's, there are, there is a resident unit down the street.
There's several, there's several.
Right. Right, and, so my question is, excuse me, my question is, do we have complaints now?
We do receive, um, we do receive complaints now from the ways that there are restaurants that has a band, um, there are.
And what, and how is that addressed? I mean, it's a commercial area, it's made for entertainment, you have residents there, and now think they deserve quiet enjoyment, so how do we, how do we put those two together?
It would depend on whether there's a violation, so noise complaints, um, do you go to the police department, and, um, if, you know, if they're not in violation of the ordinance, and there are, is no issue, but if they're, get banned from playing, denied at half, eleven P M, within a noise ordinance, then there would be a violation citation issue, but.
I guess to be more specific about, about any complaints that come up, are those complaints about, from the, from the people that actually live in those second story applications, or are they just in surrounding neighborhoods? I mean, I can understand the neighbors that's living on Boyd Street, perhaps upset and busy, get a little louder, go a couple streets over on the other side, that's the real, same, same thing, but, we don't have any way of knowing that right now, do we? Other than just complaints about noise in the building.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, I've got some anecdotal stuff, I deal with citations, we have noise complaints, there haven't been any noise citations in the last couple of years that I'm aware of, and I've seen those, but that doesn't mean the police don't have to deal with those, just kind of handle them without you.
Right. Here, we have, I think, uh, can I back up here again?
Ooh, we can.
This is good.
Ten steps.
If we were to convey to you guys that we do like the design, um, would that allow you to go forward if we?
Yes.
Well, let, well, I guess even a better question, I'm not gonna repeat whether or not it makes any difference at this point, I mean, I mean, if you've gotta go through a special use permit process, then what difference does it make if we approve the design?
Yeah, it does, because the contract, too, you get your permit, I mean, that's probably the reality of your contract, correct?
Correct.
And that's the contingency in the, in the buyer's agreement.
Right, but that would, but that would be the conditional use.
Correct.
Right, rather than the design.
Oh, I know, I'm just saying, we've got three steps to go through.
Right, and it just seems to me that we should see it all at once.
I, I don't disagree.
Also, I got a, a question here, you stated that you do not own one fifteen, Mallory, so we go through this process of property that does not belong to you?
Right, we're, we're gonna auction, purchase that property.
So you think we got, it's, it's not under, it's not under contract?
Not currently. So you have the owner's permission to be doing this?
Uh, he's not in that, it's, okay, yeah, no one else is gonna do it, um.
And may I, um, break it, Mr. Fair, one last thing procedurally, um, so as far as what can, what the I P C may do under the, uh, ordinance for this sort of application, it's been before you once, already in June, and then it was deferred from that, um, you can defer another time, but you would need the opposite concurrence, if the I P C wants to continue the initial review, um, to provide guidance about future stuff, so if that's part of what you want to do, I don't know if you're gonna head there, but I want, head you off before you get too far, that you would need the occurrence to defer it further down the road, that's the obligation.
I think we're gonna have a date to defer to.
Right. I'm gonna ask you this, Mr. Day, uh, and I'm, I'm not so sure on the legal, the legal, how, how do we grant a permit for something that somebody does it own, even if they, they don't have a agency agreement or anything at this point?
They do, where it's submitted, the application to us, they do have to have an agent authorization form, so as long as the applicant, um, you have applicant signature on that, as well, or the owner's signature, authorized, you can.
Okay, we have that.
We have that, and so, right, so, so that means, if, I mean, if, this group does not give order to purchase it, I mean, the current owner, would have to, or do you have approval to, to do this on that property?
Okay, Mr. Day, you've heard, you've heard us all talking up here, um, uh, the, my thing is, we should, that, we should see the whole package at once, I, I just, this, this piecemeal aspect of this.
This was the direction we got from staff, what we approached about the application process.
Okay, well, I mean, I understand that, perhaps, but, but it seems to me as a, as a commission, that, that I would feel better, and I think folks out there might feel better, if we, if we presented it the whole thing at one time, and not the whole thing, it's, the, the conditional use permit is what concerns me most, uh, the design can be tweaked, you know, if, once you get the conditional use, then if we don't like the way the balcony looks, then you can change it up, if we don't like the way the roof looks, that can be changed, uh, the conditional use, if you don't have that, you don't have anything, so it seems to me that's the most important part of all of this, so I would like, I'll make a motion.
Agreed.
And, and, and understand from our attorney, that, that, that you have to agree to this, agree to a deferral, I would like to make a motion to defer. Well, I gotta ask Charles, he's got a.
It's either that or deny, I mean, you gotta understand the.
Right, but, well.
We have to defer or deny, correct? I mean, or make one of the other moves.
Or, or approve.
Right, I just, but, I don't.
We got a motion in a second, I'm looking for discussion.
We need a date to defer to, don't we? And to avoid a, a future deferral, but same problems, we need to know when they might have a package ready.
So, yeah, if you, if you defer it to a date certain, and the applicant agrees to it, as they could allow, um, then, then we don't have to read it, so it was moved forward on the record, but if it's kind of tabled indefinitely to date uncertain, then we would have to read it at that point in time.
Well, I think, I think the only thing, the only thing that we would need in addition to, to what is provided already, would be perhaps some more conversation, and perhaps a little more thinking about how this parking works, that seems to be the biggest, biggest question for us, you've heard from the Floyd Street neighbors, they've got some questions there, and so I would hope that we came, came back, we have a little more information, maybe, uh, a little more input from the neighbors, as to how this is best work, some questions about lay down area, perhaps we have some better answers for that.
And conditional use. And conditional use.
And, well, the conditional use would be part of the next application, I would hope.
Right.
Everyone on board with, with the motion stated?
I'm good.
All right.
You have a date?
Oh, you call for it.
You gonna guess?
I can agree, yes.
We have a date? So that's indefinite or to a certain date?
Do we need a date?
We need a date.
Yeah, we need a date.
Yeah. How long would it take you to, uh, do that?
That's tricky, because then, at that point, we would engage civil engineer, and we'd have to call up the emergency, which could work.
Thirty days.
Earlier than.
I don't know until I make phone calls, really, to get that.
So if we set it for ninety, can we move it forward? If we say ninety days, can we land it back in next month?
So I, I think if you have the concurrence of the applicant, I would think you can defer to a date certain, um, you would want to amend your motion, or, I, I think to have that date be the date of deferral, um, but I, I don't see an issue, as long as there's a concurrence of the applicant to that date certain.
We're trying to give him enough time to do that, but not make him wait unnecessarily.
So could we put ninety days in there, and if he's actually done in sixty days, is it possible to move it back to the last, or do we have to stick with that ninety?
We do need to stick with the day.
And could he defer to what I'm gonna do, done in ninety? Could he?
And I wonder if you could, um, if it kind of hinges on the C U P doing that, and you didn't work with that, maybe, maybe it's a deferral until the conditional use permit application is ready to present to this board, to this commission, I, I don't know if that's too, I think that could work, I'd say to a date certain.
Have you renoticed?
It, it, um, it would be ridiculous, but we would be noticing the C U P, um, anyway at that time, so we would just conclude with that, that would be, and then deal it all, okay, that would be.
Okay, so, so what's my motion now?
You gotta put a date in. Can defer until the C U P is submitted, does it need to be a specific date, or ninety days?
Stand always.
Okay.
Okay, so, so that's my motion. That, that, that's good, I, oh, we already had a second, so.
We have to amend your motion.
Yeah, I would, that's, that's.
Right.
I'll suggest a motion to amend the standing motion.
Right, well, that's, well, that's what I was gonna ask for somebody to amend my motion.
I'll make a motion to amend the standing motion, um, to, uh, defer this until the C U P has been submitted, that's it.
Okay, now, now we need to vote on the amended for.
Is there a motion, and we have a second? I'll leave you safe.
I'll be amended.
I'll be amended.
All right. Now, vote on the motion. Abandon the motion. Call for, call for a vote on the.
Call for a vote on the amended motion.
Right.
We have a second on that, it's, it's over.
Yeah, it's on the table.
Okay, I'll lose the favor.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. This is, uh, P P G four dash five, Demery Way remodel, village preservation, consider village preservation design review approval for a remodel of existing residential units located at six three four, six three six, six three eight, six four zero, Demery Way, six seven dot, of the same village preservation, Allen Preservation Overlay District, Brandon Pitch, native of K. Reynolds, L. S.
Yeah, this is, uh, U T twenty-four five, so this is the village preservation, and, uh, there are two duplexes that are currently on the property, it's four units total, and, uh, you have existing carports, they are planning to screen in to have additional living space, uh, they are reconfiguring their driveway entrance, uh, currently driveway goes to the center of the property, and there's parking, and kind of towards the back, but they are planning to, um, kind of terminate the parking at the start of the project, or after Demery Way, and have all the parking right there, and they are planning to, um, kind of pull in as well. So they are showing, so this is the four units, they are showing eight spaces, um, this is the current start of the property, you can see the, um, the two duplexes here, and, so this is their planned renovation, so these carports, um, are, are at either end, that are gonna be screened in, and then, um, as you can see here, this is the, at the top part of the screen, this is the parking right after Demery Way, uh, they're going to make the pool, and there's gonna be kind of a courtyard in the middle without the, the driving access through the middle, they're just zoomed in, you have that, and then you go to the elevation, showing the screened in area, and it starts with photos of the existing duplexes. And then more plan, and the fire possible. And I, uh, please, Mr. Pitch is here?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Any questions for staff? Uh, I've got, I've got one, just to be clear, this is, what, what we're approving again is the design of this.
Yes, sorry, it is the design.
It's the design issue, and, and to be clear, they're, uh, they're basically staying within the existing footprint.
Yes, they are.
And, um, and it looks like they're adding a bathroom, and, and closing, or, or closing a little carport for a screen porch.
Yes, the, the screen porch, um, enclosure is part of the building preservation, because it's exterior, but, um, the interior, you know, bathroom, um, conversion, you know, is something that, that's working, so, so you're only looking at the screen porch, um, the parking layout, and the courtyard, it went out.
I assume this, the colors are correct on the rendering?
Uh, I would agree, applicant, on that.
The, for, for the colors, it's gonna be consistent with kind of.
Yes, wait a second, we'll call them in a second. Okay. You have a question for staff? Please come up, please, introduce yourself.
Brandon Pitch, um, here on behalf of the Demery Way renovation, um, you have a question about the, the color, I didn't know, to include the color, the, the existing exterior is, considering the photos, it's like a green color, it'll be consistent with, you know, um, village paint scheme, I mean, it's a, it's a white or a green, this is where is the exterior.
It matches the.
It'll, it'll match existing, is what I would say.
All these are them.
Okay. You have a question?
Well, what's the current, uh, tenancy?
Uh, the current, and, and, we are the agent of representing, and, and because we have a proprietary contract to acquire, uh, the current tenancy, one tenant has moved out, the other three tenants have been long-term tenants, and they're currently moving up.
So it's used for long-term now, is it gonna go to short-term, is that the intent?
We wanna have the option, so it's, it's potentially short-term, or could be, it could kind of higher in, uh, long, longer term, kind of, when you're gonna type that up.
You have any questions?
Okay, thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve V P two four five.
Uh, Mr. Fair, can you have the building ready?
Oh, sorry.
This is, thank you, thank you, Mr. Day, this is a public hearing, um, is anyone here who'd like to comment on the party? Hearing, hearing that, we'll close by the time of the period.
I'll make a motion to approve V P dash two four dash five as presented.
A second.
Okay, and then the motion in a second, I'll write in the paper the motion, please indicate. Thank you all. Next is, uh, S P two four three one, one one, one eight one one, Federico Road, site plan approval, consider site plan approval for two new commercial buildings. Consider site plan approval for two new commercial buildings and associated infrastructure. The property is located at eighteen eleven, Roosevelt Road, six thousand dollars. Parcel zero four, zero two, three two zero, and it's done highway commercial. Adrian Tate, agent for Gomez East Peyton and Dale Slay, owners.
So this is a site plan for eighteen eleven Federico, and this property is, as you can see, uh, it fronts on Federico, but it's also a connection to Riverview Road back here. And there's an existing vacant commercial building on the site. They are proposing to do two new commercial buildings on the property, both of them will be two stories and two stories. Uh, one is approximately fifty-three hundred square feet, the second is approximately eighty-three hundred square feet. And the eighty-three hundred square foot building does include a drive-through. So they have stated that the proposed uses are office and a, on the property. And they have indicated that the existing vacant building is will be demolished. And so this is their site plan. And so they are showing their residential on the, the backside of the property, so they are showing, okay, so the western side of the property, they are showing a type, type A bumper along there. Um, also type A bumper along the north side, which is along a drainage ditch, it does have a, um, just have a, a, a basement there. And, and that's probably because that is zone, our county-owned, it's a residential site, so it does certainly have a type A bumper. They are showing the type E bumper along Federico. And then the properties to the south are highway commercials, they do not need buffers. Uh, they are showing the two existing accesses off of Federico, as well as they will have an access to Riverview as well. And here's some photos of the site, um, they are, probably have a tree plan, so they did submit a, a tree inventory in photos. And then a tree plan as well that has been reviewed by our, our county, our rest, and is in compliance. Just some photos of the existing site. And this is their tree plan. These are our possible questions. And Peter Shonauer is here, is he here?
Yes, thank you.
I'm actually here.
We'll call them in a minute. Any questions for staff? I've, I've, I've just got one, that's, that's the existing, the existing access points are, are there existing, or are the access points on the site plan, they're existing, correct?
They are, and our, our property engineer did, did make note of that in his review, that, um, that typically the site would be limited only to access points, but because they're all existing, then, um, there, you haven't any issues, you know, and so he approved them.
Uh, I don't know. Wait for the owner to speak, or, or the agent, or question the staff now. So we have two existing Federico side access points. Was there thought given to, to make the ingress only? Cause traffic has changed on Federico since that bank, original bank was built. So were, were there any discussion with the traffic engineer on that?
I, in the comments, they, they did not make note of, of that specifically, you know, right now, they are showing this full access, so right in.
Two-way.
Yeah, two-way, two-way.
Good. Any other questions for staff? I'd hear from the agent. Introduce yourself, please.
Um, hi, good evening, I'm Adrian Tate, and I am applicant for this SP two four two one, eighteen eleven Federico Road. I've thought with me tonight, people hell, this is shoot survey, we've got Pete with Tidewater Engineering, and Frank Mitchell, um, with the Time and Bank and Trust. Um, we are here to discuss the purchased property for the purpose of relocating two existing local businesses on the island. The first of which is my design firm and your design firm. Um, we're currently located in the Solange Shopping Center. The second of which is the Time and Bank and Trust. Um, and they are currently located in the shopping center across from the Demery Road Fire Station. Um, this property is currently vacant, as you saw. And, um, we've been working with Josh Shonner, the architect, to develop some really lovely architectural plan. And firstly, I'm excited about beautifying this area of Federico Road. We have a really, I believe, thorough site plan here that everyone's been working on. So I've got these guys there to answer any technical questions. That is not my expertise.
Yeah, I, I don't guess we have any questions. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak, either for or against this project?
I think it's amazing.
I know, it's nice. Yeah, it's nice, I like to see them around where they're at.
Okay, all right.
All right, approved.
So no, no more comments? If you have any more comments, please come to the podium, even though it's short and sweet, I'd still like, I'd still like for you to introduce yourself and tell us a few things.
Hey, I'm Janine Brooks, I just wanted to mention, after you were talking about that, the ingress, the ingress and all that. That entrance off of Riverview Drive originally was an excellent drive-in traffic when that was the A bank. So, you know, I, I guess the panel hadn't actually been a two-way in and out there currently. So that might be something.
Thank you, Anthony. Anyone else, and I'll call on maybe our engineer to address that question.
Good evening, I'm Keith Shonauer, I'm for engineering, um, just wanna talk about access. These are existing access points, all three. The, uh, the connection to Riverview Drive, we actually initially presented it as a one-way, as an annual park, and we're trying to increase the parking. Engineering made us align it, um, eighteen foot wide for a two-way. And you know, during that part, while parking, while ten square foot of the building, that's why we had it as a two-way.
Yeah, what, what, so what was the logic? How did you make it two-way?
They asked for it and Kate was the one.
Come on, Kate.
You're asking the logic.
I think it's, uh, I think we made the assumption the current north curb cut was made for the drive-in of the, now, it used to be the bank. And that was a one-way in, was it not?
No, I don't know the history of that one, honestly.
I mean, it was a bank, it was a drive-through. So, so we're taking a one-way access and returning into another left-hand turn situation.
Would you like us to make it entry-only?
I, I just think that would be, make more sense.
We could, we could, we could reduce the width and put some signs that it's, it's, you know, like.
Well, and it, it would help if you angled the, the park of the places coming in. So that when the folks leave the design business, they kind of aim to go out the back, or they can circle around the bank and route that exit.
I think, yeah, by narrowing up the driveway, we can bring the parking, those four spaces a little bit further south and probably angle. We definitely, definitely look at that sun change and see if we can angle, I, I don't wanna commit to it in case we angle parking, it's not efficient. But, but we can, we can commit to making that entry-only.
I think that, that's a reasonable thing to do. Not gonna harm the business, I don't think, right?
All right, any other questions for, for Mr. Shonauer?
I would just compliment the, uh, the, the owner and contractor, I mean, it's an improvement over that existing, I saw it, it's been here for a decade, I think.
I, I do have one more question.
Sure.
Um, so there's proposed to be a bank coming into this location.
Right.
There was a bank here previously.
Okay.
And these, these entrances were existing previously for the other bank as well, right?
Yeah, those, those are there right now.
Okay. Go ahead, thank you.
Good. Questions will close the public. Commission?
So it's safe to assume you're gonna knock down the tiny office?
We need to relocate that for you, basically.
Hey, that was in the bank.
I'll make a question. We're gonna make a question to approve SP two four two one. Ask for the.
Okay, motion in a second, any discussion on the motion?
Do you all wanna have the condition of the north entrance being entry-only?
I don't.
Well, I mean, are you requiring us to make that?
If you would like to amend them, if you would like to amend it.
Well, I, I would, I would like to amend, we need to. We talked about a bank for a bank, but we're actually adding an office. So it is a change relative to that curb cut.
So what do you think?
Well, if we say you amend that, then, and the engineer is not gonna make that change unless we make an amendment, that's necessary.
I'd really like to talk right now.
Well, we'll allow the discussion, since, since, uh, since Commissioner Duncan just brought it up and would like you to comment, whether or not you think it's a good idea, and if so, would, would you implement that idea? I guess that's, that's the question, right?
Say it, Mike.
And, and, and if so, and if so, if, if you think it's a good idea, and our county, our county traffic department thinks it's okay, then, uh, if you implement it, then we don't necessarily need to make it part of this. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
All right, you'll agree to making that entry-only, and, and we'll work on the angled parking.
It works out with all funds involved.
My post, but.
That's what I heard.
Okay, all right, so you're, you're good, Commissioner Duncan? Okay.
All right.
Any, any further discussion? Call, call the motion, all in favor of the motions? All right.
All right, this is, uh, SCP two four dash one dash two five three, Redford Village Special Use Permit. Consider approval of a special use permit application to allow a drinking, drinking establishment, it is specialty shop. The Highway Commercial, HC, zoning district, property is zone, is located, is located at two five three Redford Village, six thousand dollars. Parcel zero four, zero two eighty-one, Greg Walbridge, advocate, agent for Wolf Island Partners, the LLC owner.
So this is a specially used permit for, um, it's for a drinking establishment, it's a beer specialty shop, so the alcohol ordinance, the county alcohol ordinance, defines it as a beer specialty shop. Um, but, uh, we are, we're restricted with the zoning ordinance, that a drinking establishment, um, is something that is not a restaurant. A restaurant is, um, is where food is prepared, um, this particular establishment will not have food prepared on site in the restaurant. Um, so we do define it as a drinking establishment, so they do technically still have to get a special use permit for that. Um, so they are located, and are basically located in Redford Village, so they're at the end of Redford Village. Um, the name, whatever this is, Uptown, Hat and Cigar. And one of the criteria for a drinking establishment in the Highway Commercial zoning is that, um, they do need to have, um, a, to show residential property within five hundred feet. And as part of the alcohol ordinance, um, they do look at residential within six hundred feet, so we did include a map of that, your packet also has it in the presentation as well, showing the surrounding residential. And the definition of drinking establishment and restaurant. And then, um, working sure on August first, um, did grant a provisional alcohol license, uh, to the Wolf Bridge for this business. And, um, they're required in, there's a special use permit granted for it to be a, a full alcohol license. And so this is, uh, the property, um, so it's at the, uh, the end of the side of Redford Village, um, near the, near the marsh. And then.
It is the southern end of that building, south of the end of the building, it's not the whole building.
No, it's the south, it's where.
Right.
I think we're March point.
March, right, right, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, March point.
I just wanna be sure.
But it's on the south.
It's the southern side.
I love it, it's like, um, yeah.
Yeah, the southern side.
Good arrows, south arrow.
Yeah, my pointer's not extending to the screen, so.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, I mean, I, I. Okay. Apartment is approved.
Uh, this is a six hundred foot radius nap, um, so this kind of hatch, this sort of hatch circle is a six hundred radius around this particular site. So there, um, and the green dots are the, are the residential areas.
Oppose.
Five hundred feet, not six hundred feet.
Oh, so five, yeah, sorry, six hundred was alcohol ordinance, um, asked for a nap of six hundred, but, but you're right, in the Highway Commercial, it's five hundred, so just maps is, the math that we have is for six hundred, so. Yeah, but you're right, it is five hundred for Highway Commercial. Um, and then, and just for notice purposes, the special use permit, um, we noticed two hundred feet from the property, so right different part of here. So here's some elevations of the, of the signaling. And then, um, uh, they, they provided some, some material, um, plans for what they are proposing for the, the bar and the establishment. Um, and then they've also narrated that within your packet, where, um, definitely describe more, in more detail, uh, than this. So if you have your possible motion, then Mr. Walbridge is here, um, is being made, well, thank you.
Any questions?
Well, just to clarify, we're, we're voting to approve the drinking establishment in place of where a bar was existing.
I was going to say the same.
In the, in the bar district of Redford Village.
Correct, that's, that's.
So that's basically where we're going.
That's where we're going.
And this seems to be similar to the Drowler factory, is that safe to say?
Well, we can ask, we can ask the advocate, a little, a little talk about that.
Okay.
Uh, but, but I had the same question, I think. All right, any other questions for staff?
Stephanie, do you not see the county already approved, um, alcohol license?
Yes, I'm today approved, um, approved a provisional license, and it's easily conditioned upon, um, him getting a special use permit, so when that is done, then it will.
The thing is, though, with that, what we do, the county's already going to approve that.
Yeah, so it, it did meet the requirements, um, for, for the county ordinance.
All right, is the advocate or agent here, just please, please come up and introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about your, your, your project.
Happy to, uh, good evening, my name is Greg Walbridge. Um, I am, uh, the instigator behind Uptown Hat and Cigar. Uh, it's a project because the Drowler factory is closing. Drowler factory is where my work at group used to hang out quite a bit, we drank some beers, we talked about how awesome they are, we worked out a lot. Um, and then we drank some more beer. And so anyways, about a year ago, Drowler factory found out it's gonna lose its lease, so we started looking around, uh, I approached, uh, Josh Nichols a couple of times, he told me no. I kept on going back, he finally said yes, I don't know why, I don't care. Um, it's a beer specialty shop, we, uh, believe in craft beer, and one thing that I would highlight for reasons I'll tell later. Uh, but it's, we like, we like good beer, we like, uh, we love our location, we think it's fantastic, it's out there on the marsh. Uh, the Drowler factory is a great place, it's gonna be a huge upgrade for much more public, uh, dark blue, it's a lot of furniture. Big garage door, looking at that beautiful marsh out there, some really spectacular French flower fielders. Um, we think it's gonna be a wonderful place to come out, out of here, uh, watch the sunset across the marsh, maybe get a springstorm goes across or anything like that, maybe go find an alligator, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. I, I've got, I've got one question, I, 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 I think we'll call on you. I've got one question, live, live music, is that gonna be an issue?
Is live music gonna be an issue?
Yeah, are, are you gonna have live music at your establishment? I guess, being so close to those apartments right next door.
Um.
That's, that's, that's the one thing I thought of, I wasn't concerned about.
Yeah, the Wolf Island group and everything like that, you know, they own, uh, they, they've got a restaurant group in there, and they've got Bubba, they've got, uh, Wolf Island, they've also got NASS. NASS has a wonderful outdoor stage area. Uh, the only kind of live music we talked about, and I always call it, like, if he's a guy with a guitar, he's really, really good. If we need live music, it's gonna be kind of happy hour time, and then you're gonna go over to NASS, because NASS has a stage, and a much better place over there. The Drowler factory never even considered having live music, we're gonna probably maybe consider, we're gonna actually have maybe a Spotify account. It didn't have a Spotify account, I mean, it's. It didn't have a Spotify account, I mean, it is. The Drower Factory was under the responsibility, I liked it, but it was definitely a place that we could do some upgrades, and that's what we're gonna do. Live music, um, happy hour, one man, one guitar, one guitar, that's about it, over by seven.
Well, we do have a noise, a noise ordinance, we could keep that, but just, just, just being sensitive to the fact that you're all pushed up against that, that topic complex, or community.
We'll be quiet if you catch two two eight.
Yeah, okay, but that, that was just a reminder. Alright, any other questions for the advocate? Alright, anyone else who'd like to comment on this project?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Michael Smino, I'm vice president of Skits Landing. I was here tonight to just see what was, uh, in the proposal, as, uh, no one really knew anything about anything until, uh, we received the letter, so I just came to see what's going on with it. Everything I've heard tonight sounds to me like it would be a good fit in the area. Uh, biggest thing ever to turn out is they're gonna have giant rock star venue over there, which, uh, we're having our board meeting for a night, and I'll just wait everyone to let know that, that's not the case. So, everything I've seen in the papers in it, I think makes it great avenue to the area, so, looking forward to it, when the establishment finally opens, I think, uh, I, if I was, uh, y'all, I would vote positive, I would say we could do this.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, don't shake my hand while I'm in the meeting, like us. We've had a couple here.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
Sure, I'll make one, why not, I made them all in this trouble. Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve S U P two four dash one as presented.
Motion in a second, we, we got it. So we have a motion to second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll just ask, ask for a vote of the motion, please, and all the paper. Thank you, we got it. Yes, Steph, well, Steph, at her, her John's request this afternoon, he was asking us to talk about, uh, possible change of venue for our meetings. Um, there's been a push with the county to, to maybe move our meetings back to the manor for the courthouse, and use the, use the permission room that they have there now.
Make a motion to deny it.
Well, well, no, this is, this is an honest discussion, the biggest reason of the hearing, right, the biggest reason is, is, is the, uh, is, is, is the tech they have over there versus here.
They just brought these things back.
Beautiful, they're new.
Well, I mean, that we didn't have in the last couple months.
Before, we, we actually had problems with this as well, so, so it's, it's, it's a good question of debate to discuss it, and so, uh, if we discuss it, then. So, so what about here, and we are. Okay, alright, alright, Bryce says stay.
All the applicants are, mostly coming from now on too, right?
It's the island, so everything that takes place, takes place on the island, and the people that are opposed are, may go against it, also live on the island, so.
Doug, what do you say?
I said let's keep it.
Okay, Patrick?
We're being asked.
Well, we're, we're just being asked to have a discussion about it.
Karen, tell us then.
Yeah, they'll, 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 they'll just what we're gonna do in the end, but, but at least they're asking us.
Yeah, okay, if the county wants to move it, it's a better facility, it's my understanding, from, from a, um, a remote viewer standpoint, it's not.
But that's, well, that's the way I feel, is, is, that, it seems more and more lately, we're having, uh, uh, people who are viewing this remote.
If, if I can interject.
Yes.
I, I watch everything from my office live, and it's terrible in this room, people don't get anywhere near that microphone, it's hard to hear you guys, it's just, that's why I've started coming back.
Right.
I know y'all wanna see my.
But.
It, it is, it's, it's terrible.
Well, that's, well, that was my feeling too, man, is, 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 is we aren't projecting to the public the way we should in this room right, right now. Uh, the county, I think, has been discussing about how to fix this room, and it's, you know, it's money. But, but right now, we do have a, a very appropriate meeting space that they've recently spent, uh, 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 understand a lot of money on, to get the tech right. And, um, that's, that's the reason for the discussion.
We'd have to go with those.
Well, but I think, I think more and more, I think more and more, lots, a lot of people are viewing us with nothing, they aren't coming to the meetings, you know, they're, they're watching it on, online, including Matthew. He doesn't go to the meeting, no.
What, do you think moving the venue will, uh, stop there for viewers online and go there?
We are.
Other person?
No.
Alright, so they still, I think they still would do some, on the island, planning the mission, and that, me personally think it should be on the island.
Okay, alright, on the beach.
I think it makes it more accessible to the.
Uh, Miss Lee, can you get all this down? We can make a.
Invest in the sound system.
I mean, that, that would be my thought, let's fix whatever we need to fix, take it where it works.
Okay.
Ash could probably do it.
Alright, we, we weren't asked to vote, we were asked to have a discussion, so we had a discussion.
Alright.
Alright.
Very discussed. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, you make that.